Everyone come to order, please. If you have any electronic devices, please silence them at this time. It's $5 fine for our coffee pot. Anyway, welcome everybody here to the March 10th Board Meeting here in beautiful town Freeport. I'll ask Pastor Sam Brown from Cross Point Church to come forward for the invocation and then the pledge to right behind him, please stand.
Would you join me as we pray? Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for this opportunity to gather. And we want to pray, Lord, most of all, for your wisdom and your guidance as we discuss these important details for today. We thank you, God, for all these leaders for taking the time to be here and to help us to push our community forward. We love you, Jesus, and pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sam. We have, Tony, if I can give you a few minutes to what you want to talk about?
Yes, we have, excuse me, we had one of Walden County's own was honored by being inducted into the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame, Mr. Mike, Colonel Mike Flint. And a little bit about Mike, he was a pilot in the Air Force, served his country greatly and bravely, but he was even a better citizen of Walden County. He and his wife Charlotte were both very active, Charlotte still is in the Republican Party. Charlotte's a state committee woman for our area. But Mike gave his time with no expectations. He was a perfect example of what a citizen should be. He served on the CBA, very active with Northwest Florida State College, South Walden Utilities, and many more things that Mike has done for his fellow citizens in Walden County. And I just want everybody to know what an honor it was for me to know this man, but more important, what a great citizen he was for Walden County. And I'm happy for Charlotte that Mike was honored with this. And I think as a county, we all need to be proud of what Mike did for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord. Ms. Holly Holt, Department of Health, I think you've got an update for us on the...
And I hope you all have a copy of the slides. They have changed since last week, but what we'll do, the presentation is actually in front of you. But as we move forward, a couple of the ones we'll go through, and I'll look at Lewis and he can kind of go through those because last minute today, there were some new news. So I just wanted to make sure that you realize that what we gave you may be tweaked a little bit as we move forward. I also want to thank you for working very closely with us, with working closely with the Department of Health here in Walden County. We have open communication with you all, and I appreciate that so much. I know DeeDee is our board liaison, and whenever I need anything, I go to her and we're able to tunnel things. But it's very, it's very nice to have a board like you all to work with so closely like we do. We appreciate it from the Department of Health side of it. Okay. The presentation, we're going to go to the overview. We'll talk a little bit about COVID-19, the outbreak, our transmission and symptoms, treatment and testing, prevention, travel advisories, public health monitoring. And just like I said, this is fluid and it's flexible. What we talk about today can change tomorrow. Everything that we have comes down from the CDC to the Department of Health and then on down. So we'll go through this rather quickly, but at the very end, if you have any questions for me or anyone else has questions, I'll be glad to answer as best that I can. So March 1st, the Florida Department of Health reported Florida's first two cases of COVID-19 in Hillsborough and Manatee County residents. As a result, the governor issued Executive Order 20-51 directing to public health emergency and establishing Florida's response protocol for COVID-19. The state surgeon general issued a declaration of public health emergency for the state of Florida. So we'll talk just a little bit about the outbreak of the new coronavirus. And let me just mention to you, we've had coronavirus around. This is the new coronavirus. It's a novel coronavirus, and that's what makes it different is because it is new, we're not sure. A lot of things, and we're working very closely with CDC through the Department of Health about what we need to do to take precautions. So as you all probably know by now, it's a respiratory illness and outbreak first detected in Wuhan City, Hubei Province, China. The first case is linked to a seafood and live animal market. Person-to-person spread, and it's spread to other countries, including the United States. And this is where I'm going to add a few things to this, Lewis. The widespread transmission and restrictions on entry to the U.S. is a level three. So when we talk about level three and level two, there's reasons for that. Level three, there's four countries that are banned and moving back and forth to these countries. It's China, Iran, South Korea, and Italy. And then a level two, when we talk about that, we're talking about the country of Japan Countries with a level three CDC travel advisory, these are the countries that I've just talked about before. It's a mandatory 14-day self-isolation, develop respiratory symptoms, contact healthcare provider or county health department. So that has changed recently, too. So if these individuals have gone into these countries and they come back, we're basically, most of them were notified by the CDC by travel and things like that. But if not, and they develop respiratory symptoms, they need to contact us or their local provider. And then we'll talk a little bit about testing later on. Countries with a level two, and now they've included cruises to that, they're to monitor health and limit interactions with others for 14 days. So some of the individuals are thinking about taking cruises for spring break. This is where you need to think about this because if you leave the country and you come back, you've got to limit your interactions for 14 days. That definition is a little vague for most people, depending on what your job is. For me, that would be very hard for me to do is limiting interactions unless I worked, you know, by through my house or whatever, telehealth or tele for that. But in those individuals that develop respiratory symptoms, immediately self-isolate, and they're to call us or their provider so we can do some testing. So that's been kind of the new news is the cruises with level two. And that all came back, or that came down to us through CDC, through the Department of Health. Okay, and we'll continue to talk a little bit. As of today, this changed this morning, there has been 647 cases in the United States. The CDC has actually been working on various numbers because we have actually introduced new testing sites. It has been just the county health departments through public health, and now they've opened up some more testing sites that's going to become available to our side of the country. And because of that, CDC is kind of not quite sure exactly what the numbers are today, but the approximate numbers are around 647 cases. We have had 19 cases in Florida. For Department of Health, our highest priority is to control the spread of COVID-19. As of today, protecting the most vulnerable individuals in our community is mainly very important to us. And of course, that's elderly and those that have comorbid conditions, diabetes, hypertension, things like that, that we all seem to get as we get older in life. So those are some of the things that we worry a little bit about. Today, I wanted to let you know we had a meeting over at the Health Department. Jeff Goldberg helped me with that through emergency management. He's going to speak a little bit at the very end of this and talk to us a little bit. But we've met with healthcare partners, with schools, with law enforcement, fire rescue, and we are going to continue having monthly meetings or also, we're also going to have some focus groups on what our next steps are going to be for our community. We did talk to those individuals about specifics, PPE, that's for protective personal equipment, what they would be wearing if they come in contact, and new different things like that that we need to make sure that we're doing in our community to keep everybody safe and free from COVID-19. There are some, Department of Health is having some weekly calls for clinicians and healthcare providers. I think they are also adding educational institutions to those calls, so they are coming out. I don't have that list right now, but it's something I'm trying to get my hands on. But if anybody's interested in that, they can reach out to us and we can get that information to you. So let's go and go to transmission and symptoms. This is real, hopefully, if you hadn't seen anything else on the news media, you've talked about how this is transmitted, we've talked about how this is transmitted. So for COVID-19, it's mostly often spread from person-to-person. Spread through respiratory droplets from an infected person who coughs or sneezes, spread among close contacts, so basically the six feet is what you need to be thinking about, and it's very hard for some of us to do that. I heard a couple of people in the audience talking about the elbow bumps, and basically they are correct, that is what we're supposed to do. But it is very hard for us to want to do that. Symptoms can appear two to 14 days after exposure, fever, cough, difficulty breathing. Those are some of the things that individuals will experience. Okay, we'll move on to treatment and testing. The CDC recommends people who think they may have been exposed to COVID-19 to call their county health department, and I mean, I had something this change, or their healthcare provider, immediately and self-isolate. From that information that we receive, we have an algorithm that was changed today, this morning, on the individuals that we would need to test. And that's basically a swab test that we send out to our laboratories either in Tampa, Jacksonville, Miami. I think our tests go to Tampa lab, so for us. But there are some tests that are coming out like through LabCorp, Quest, some of those things, the very near future, if that didn't happen today as we speak. Testing is currently only available, okay, see, that was what we had up there, and that has changed from the other day. So the CDC developed a test for COVID-19, and a little bit about the testing, DOH Bureau of Public Health Laboratories are testing with CDC's test kits, and that's what I was talking about in the three labs across our state. The Food and Drug Administration, who approves the test, requires that presumptive positive results are sent to CDC for confirmation. So when you see something that someone has written, they said, these are presumptive cases versus confirmed cases, these are the ones that look like they are confirmed through our labs, and then once sent to the CDC, they are approved for confirmation. So that's the difference in when you see presumptive and confirmation. And then the next is not any longer. So we'll move on to the last bullet. For persons who meet CDC and DOH criteria for COVID-19 tested, testing, your healthcare provider can work with your local health department to test you. We've been working very hard internally with our health department on trying to figure out the best way to keep the least exposure out to individuals if they come into the county health department. So we feel like we've worked out a pretty decent plan for that. Like I said, PPE is very important, and that we do the testing where it doesn't affect a lot of the individuals that are coming through our health department. So we're working very hard on that, and also with the other healthcare providers in the community. International travel or contact with a COVID-19 case may put you at risk. People who've traveled internationally, we talked a little bit about this earlier, the people who have traveled internationally in the last 19 days especially to identified areas, there is a website for that on CDC, that people, individuals can go to and look at that to get more definite information, they can always call us. People who have had close contact with someone known to have COVID-19, and this is what I was talking about, risk may change over time. This is the fluid part of this. We don't know from one day to the next, basically what we're dealing with. For more information, we have the CDC website that you can go to, and it's very easy to look at that. So talking about what you can do to kind of continue about, you know, we haven't quite gotten to prevention yet, but for some treatment or prevention, if you think you're at risk and have symptoms of fever, cough, or difficulty breathing, take these steps. Call ahead to your healthcare provider, tell them about your travel or exposure, your symptoms. You can only get COVID-19 from someone with the disease. Avoid contact with others. Do not travel while sick. Cover your mouth and nose when coughing or sneezing. Wash hands often with soapy water for at least 20 seconds, especially after coughing, sneezing, or blowing your nose. And this is very important. This is spread through respiratory droplets, so we need to make sure that we are doing this every day. Teach your children, teach yourself, teach others in the community with that message. The next part, talking about prevention, this just goes through the steps again. Wash your hands, use hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol, avoid touching eyes, nose, and mouth. I'm going to tell you that is one of the hardest things to do because I find myself wanting to reach up and touch something, my hair, you know, something on my face. So those are some of the things we really need to think about. And what is important for me and most people, stay home when you're sick. I know that is one of those things, I talked with the board, the school board the other night, and we talked about that, and I told them, I said, I know I'm going to get an X for that. But my mother was a teacher, and I told them at that point in time that, you know, they want people to be in schools, but in this situation, we need to work very hard to know that people can stay at home when they're sick. And their bosses, their supervisors, their businesses understand that as we move forward. Okay, travel advisories, COVID-19 travel updates. It is prudent for travel to or sick delay or avoid travel to affected areas. General recommendations for personal hygiene, cough etiquette, keeping a distance, at least the six feet, or some of the things, the hands, this is just going through some of the things we just talked about. And a medical mask is not required if exhibiting no symptoms. When you talk about PPE and some of the things that we have to do on the healthcare setting, there are certain things that we have to wear. One is an N95 mask. But for everybody else that comes in the door that thinks that they have COVID-19 or symptoms, they can wear a regular mask when they first come in, and then we start doing the testing. Okay, we'll move to the next one. And that one, let's move to the next one after that. This is just one of the signs that CDC has put out for health alert for travelers. And we can move, public health, monitoring, DOH is monitoring those possibly exposed personnel at the agency. Sixty-seven county health departments and central office in Tallahassee work together to protect Floridians from emerging diseases. DOH receives information from CDC on U.S. citizens, residents, family returning from the impacted areas. We've actually gotten names, we've been monitoring people already. In our county, we do not have any presumptive or confirmed cases in our county, in Walden County. There has been confirmed cases to our neighboring Okaloosa County and also Santa Rosa County, but we have yet to have any confirmed cases in Walden so far. CHDs work with travelers to restrict their movement, monitor for illness, isolate persons with symptoms, and ensure healthcare providers use proper infection control techniques. So some of the monitoring process to talk about for people who have been exposed but have no symptoms, we've already kind of talked about this, monitor your symptoms for 14 days, self-isolate yourself, stay home as much as possible, avoid travel, publicly use vehicles, gathering with groups of people, going out in public, excluded from work, school, and other public places, and follow provided education to prevent the spread of infection. Those who suspected or confirmed COVID-19 are asked to take these precautions, immediately isolate at home, we've talked about that, do not participate in public activities, we've basically gone through all that, only travel by ambulance or private car and avoid public transportation. Always wear a mask when around other people or pets at home, always cover your coughs and sneezes, and that goes back to the CDC website with some of that information. Okay, immediate risk to Americans remains low. Most cases in the U.S. are likely to be identified in the coming days. There's currently limited person-to-person spread in the community, but this could change. Everyone can do their part to prevent the spread of COVID-19 and other respiratory viruses. I know we talked a little bit about, people have asked me questions about how it relates to the flu that we actually have going. You know, we have deaths that we have from the flu. We have deaths. But this is new, this frightens people a lot, but I want to assure you that going through some of the precautions that we have, just washing hands, just basic things, and then people letting us know if they've traveled and come in contact with somebody, call us, and we can walk them through the algorithms. So the rest of this basically talks about websites. I would suggest going to the CDC website. There's on the side of the CDC website, there actually has the different documents for schools, for businesses, and things like that. Okay, the last thing I want to say is there is a call center number, and it's actually located on our website, and it is 1-866-779-6121. It's the call center in Tallahassee that answers any questions concerning just basic COVID D, COVID-19 questions. So I like to give that out, just in case you have any questions, feel free to call me if anything else comes up. And I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, he's going to talk a little bit about emergency management and what he's doing to help us in the community.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I was talking about websites. We will post all the pertinent information on the county website as well, and who to contact and where to contact, so if there's any confusion where to go, they can certainly go to the county website.
Yeah, currently, the very top of our homepage has the links directly to the CDC and to the Florida Department of Health and COVID pages. We'll get on there any additional information that we get, as well as that call number as soon as we can.
Hi, Jeff Goldberg for the record. Just kind of talk about some of the things that we're working on with the Health Department. Walden County Health Department is the lead agency for any type of biological incident, which is, this is what would be considered. We support them in planning, resource coordination, public messaging, some facilitation and coordination. Last night, the governor had issued a statewide declaration of emergency. Basically, what that does is that frees up certain things regarding procurement. It names the state coordinating officer, which is the state-level incident commander, which is the director of emergency management for the state, with the deputy state coordinating officer as the secretary of health. So we're actually been coordinating with state emergency management statewide, actually. We've been doing conference, statewide conference calls twice a week, as well as numerous other conference calls. A lot of what we're doing is we're actually what the Health Department is putting out regarding public education, public information, working with HR to make sure that information gets out to the public, or, excuse me, the employees, on how to protect themselves, signs and symptoms, things like that. We're looking at contingency plans if we do have some workforce impacts, and how we can continue our mission of central functions, providing, you know, services to the community. And then resource coordination, there is, there's no supply chain issue. They're able to get supplies from point A to point B. The issue is the supplies. N95 masks, hand washing, soaps, and things like that, they're in short supply. So we're working with the state, so if some of those issues come up and affect us here in Walden County, we can work with the state to make sure that that's alleviated for the first responders. And then again, like I said, we're participating on state and national calls, and basically, whatever Holly and the Health Department need, we're standing ready to help assist them on it.
Thank you, Holly. Jeff. Any questions from the board?
Holly, real quick, you know, you hear everything on the news, and it's pretty much chaotic, panic, everything else. As I understand it, this is a problem for the more elderly people, and so 70s, middle age, right?
That's, and I'm not saying anything specific to anyone.
But I mean, they see this, I mean, nobody under 19 or something has gotten it?
So far, yes.
Or that, no?
There's not been any small children. And that is quite interesting because our flu season has been a little interesting with that because we've seen a lot more children this year with positive flu cases. So, yeah, this is totally, this is a different thing. We still need to look at it and not panic and continue to work together, try to reduce the transmission, and people that are knowing that they've come in contact with someone, that's our job to do contact investigation through the county. This thing could go really quickly, and then we would have to figure out how we would, how that would help impact our, you know, our staffing, resources, and things like that. But that's why we're working with Jeff and some others, and we're always available to help other counties, too, across the state. We don't know if this thing will be regional, and it looks like right now, we're already, it's already moved into the panhandle with a couple of cases. So, but we're just trying to decrease the transmission by getting the information out to everybody so it doesn't panic people. But we all think about if we're sick, you know, we need to stay home and try to take care of ourselves.
If somebody calls you in the morning and said, hey, I want to meet, I think I need to be tested, could they go to the Health Department and be tested?
We got a new algorithm today, and basically, if a person, if they come to, they call us, this is how we're handling it, they call the 892-815, there, I have my hair, see, I have to be careful with that, 892-815 number, then somebody called and said, I'm worried about COVID-19, I think I've got a, I've got, I might have it, or possibly come in contact with it, then that's transferred to a couple of people, more than that. They're actually taking the calls, they go through the algorithm. If they come in contact with somebody and they are, because today, this was the new news for us, persons had close contact with a laboratory confirmed COVID-19 case and fever or symptoms of lower respiratory illness, then they call us, that meets the criteria for us to do some testing. The next part of that is person who is part of a non-household outbreak of suspected COVID-19, they call us, we test them. The third, person hospitalized with unexplained respiratory illness, or person who died from an unexplained respiratory illness, we will do the testing on that. What has changed today because of these other tests that are coming out through LabCorp, you know, Quest Labs, some of those other types of commercial laboratories, this is the new guidance for that. Persons travel to or from an affected geographic area with widespread community transmission and has fever or symptoms of lower respiratory illness, and that's, you know, shortness of breath when it gets down into the chest, then this patient does meet the criteria for testing, does not meet the criteria for testing at the Health Department, but yet, we can consider getting them a test through LabCorp, Quest. The second part to that, person had community contact, they attended the same gathering with somebody that stayed in the same cruise ship, you know, that kind of thing, with a laboratory confirmed COVID-19 case and fever symptoms, then the same thing would go through the commercial laboratory. And then a person is aged greater than 65 years, has chronic medical conditions, or is in an immunocompromised state, and has fever symptoms of lower respiratory illness, that can go through some commercial laboratory. But we have this guidance, as people call us, we help to work through that and tell the individual what needs to be done.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Called meeting order. Is there any additions or deletions?
I have one addition, I need to ask for an executive session. I'll just do that in my name if that's all right with you.
All right. We'll cover that when it comes up, okay. Is there any other additions or deletions? All right. In the motion to approve the addenda, addenda with additions or deletions?
May I have your approval?
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is time for public comment for any agenda item. So if you wish to talk about it now because you may have to leave or whatever, this would be the time to do it. If you come forward and identify yourself to the clerk, and then the item number that you want to discuss.
Fred Trucker, TRIC, KTR. This is not technically an agenda item, but it relates to the last presentation about the virus. Is it okay if I say something about that?
Well, that's normally the end of the meeting. During that, public can talk about anything. This year's about agenda items.
I got a real quick comment if you want to enter.
I'll take your quick comment.
My question is, you know, if this gets a lot worse, like a lot of people think it may, we hope it doesn't, but it might, is the county equipped to do video conferencing for meetings and workshops in lieu of getting people gathering in a big group like this to reduce risk? If you decided to do that, do you have...
I think we do, because we live stream our meetings anyway.
Yeah, be a little tougher than.
Chairman, I explained to Mr. Tricker earlier on, before the meeting, that we understood that concept, we would employ it if, A, it was legal, and B, it became necessary. So it'll certainly be the board's call, but we had a conversation with Holly regarding what changes the board may need to take in our everyday activities and in board meetings, so we did address that, Fred, and if there's a legal component to it, we'll have to address. There's a technical component to it, and we will work through all of that at the appropriate time if we get to that point.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Has anyone else, public comment, reference agenda items? Seeing none. Is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Waste management is next, the EALs for waste management. I acknowledge my conflict of interest with abstaining from the vote, and I have filed a proper form with the clerk. Motion approved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, coro. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First agenda item, it's a thing of beauty with Mr. Teresa Bogard and some business purposes she's developed. Turn camera. I know we're going to want to do some pictures, so if y'all want to, she calls out, turn your hands around.
I'm pleased you brought it to us. Where you want them, how you want to do it, you want to start.
Down there, then we'll stand behind you. That work for you, girl?
Y'all move body, pretty.
See, y'all move closer together.
They're going to get a minus.
Okay, we're both loud now.
So, hi, my name is Kristen McClainey, and I'm Miss Defeniax Springs 2020. I'm a senior at Walton High School, and I've been cheerleading in many different community service organizations at Walton High School. I'm also a sophomore at Northwest Florida State College and plan to graduate in my AA this May, so very exciting. So now I want to introduce my sister queens. I have Team Miss Defeniax Springs, which her name is Cameron Sunday. She's a seventh grader at Paxton High School, and her parents are Stan and Sammy Sunday. I have Junior Miss Defeniax Springs, Anna Fraser. She's a sixth grader at Walton Middle School. Her parents are David and Brandy Frager. I have Elena Bishop. She's our 2020 Young Miss Defeniax Springs. She attends Paxton High School, and her parents are Tina and Thomas Bishop. Her dad is actually a U.S. Marine Gunnery Sergeant. He is stationed out of Cherry Point, North Carolina. I have Raylan Carter. She's our future Little Miss Defeniax Springs. She attends West Defeniax Elementary, and her parents are Brooke Wyndham and Lon Carter. And finally, Kristen Sunday is my Little Miss Defeniax Springs. She's the youngest daughter of Tammy and Stan Sunday. Kristen attends first grade at Paxton High School. We will both be presenting our community in the Miss, in the 2020 Miss and Little Miss National Peanut Festival in October in Dotson, as well as Miss and Little Miss Walton County.
Hi, everyone, I'm Heidi Hatcher. I am Miss Walton County 2020. I'm a junior at Paxton High School, as well as a dual-enrolled student at Northwest Florida State College. I am active as a cheerleader and partner of our band up at Paxton. My parents are Jamie and Christie Hatcher. And now I would like to introduce our Walton County court. First, I have my Team Miss, which is Miss Jennifer Bell. She attends Walton High School, and she is the daughter of Cindy Castile. My Junior Miss Walton County is Miss Alexis Stanley. She is the daughter of Maggie Bismack. Alexis attends Walton Middle School. My 2020 Young Miss Walton County is Miss Adegale Simmons. She's a student at West Defeniax Elementary, and her parents are Amanda McKee and Frank Simmons. My future Little Miss, who could not be here today, she is McKenna Thompson. She was not able to be here today, which is kind of sad about. But then my Little Miss is Miss Paisley Missaldon. She's our 2020 Little Miss Walton County. She's a first grader at Paxton School, and her parents are Lindsay and Justin Missaldon. We wanted to thank you all so much for allowing us to be a part of your meeting today. We all really look forward to serving in our community this year, and hope you will contact our project committee when civic events come up that we can support. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, next up on the agenda is Mr. Jones, Team Russian.
Loyas. I'm Tina Russian with Chelco, and, you know, I may not be your thing of beauty, but I have a thing of beauty with me. I've got some money for you. Just with the agenda, I wanted to make sure that we noted that to be a rebate, a refund check instead of a rebate check. So my purpose for being here this evening is to present a CIAC, Cost in the Aid of Construction Refund, to the commission. As you know, with Chelco being the not-for-profit electric cooperative, we have to collect the cost upfront for installing electrical infrastructure for our commercial facilities. And the refund check that I have with me tonight is going to be associated with a project that was installed back in 2015, with a new underground service that was put in at one of the ballfields down at Helen McCall Park. And so that check is for $17,259.26. We were able to refund that money after we did a revenue analysis based on a 60-month review, to be able to return that money. That is about 58% of the original cost. The original cost was $30,331. I'm also pleased to share with you that moving forward, those revenue analyses will be done on 30 months, with a 10-year basis. So as you all approve these projects, we thought it was important to be able to bring the money back to you as a commission. So, Mr. Chairman, may I step forward and present the check to you?
We can come around front if you'd like.
Whatever's convenient for you, sir.
You want any pictures?
Not necessary, unless you guys want to pose with me.
Mr. Chairman, let's make sure that goes in the county budget, the department budget.
Thank you, Peter, appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Piltre and guests are from Regional Utilities, something else, and that's anyway.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I am Melissa Piltre, and on behalf of the Board of Directors and Regional Utilities as a whole, I'm pleased to present the completed 2020 rate study to the Board of County Commissioners for your consideration of proposals. I would like to introduce Mr. Tony Harrison with RapTalis. He will present a small, a short presentation on the findings, and I would like to publicly thank him, his staff, as well as the staff at Regional Utilities, for all the effort per work for this study.
Thank you, Melissa. Good afternoon, again, my name's Tony Harrison. The firm, our firm name is RapTalis, and having a short presentation, I know in your agenda item, there's a technical report with lots of numbers. I like numbers a lot, and I'd be happy to discuss any of them, but I'll provide a summary for you on the slides above of our rate study. First of all, RapTalis, with RapTalis, we're the largest utility financial management consulting firm in the nation. I primarily deal with utility rates and finance, utility impact fees, but we also do municipal impact fees, parks, police, fire, roads, and so forth, strategic planning, organizational development, and so forth. Underout of us around the country, I'm out of Central Florida, so I'm used to dealing with growth areas in the state for sure, and done a lot of work in the panhandle throughout Florida, along with my colleagues. Next slide, please. Regional Utilities. Legally Informed Community Services Corp. of Walton County, we call it Regional Utilities. It's a franchise operator of the county since 1985. Its service area is south of the bay to the Gulf, from Rosemary Beach to the, to just to the east part of the county, except for the water, the water's provided by another service area within Sandeston Resort area. So that's the service area, basically mostly resort, mostly seasonal, and so forth. What we, what we conducted is a utility rate study, and we had a few objectives. One is to develop a financial plan, a five-year plan, include all costs, operating costs, upgrade, expansion, importantly, replacement of assets as they're built. A lot of what's built is underground, so it's always important to make sure that the funds are there from the ratepayers to replace it over time, to avoid having to ask for sudden and large rate increases in the future. Two, maintain a strong financial position into the future. Number three, recommend equitable charges to the customers, we want it to be fair and equitable. Fully fund the capital program, number four. And number five, look at the miscellaneous charges as well. I'll talk about those at the end. Just some summary statistics, just order of magnitude size for Regional Utilities, the number of accounts served, 15,353 water, and 17,734 wastewater. Those are actual accounts Bill sent out, sent out every month. There's a term called residential connections, it's kind of equating everything from, you know, a small residence is one ERC, we call it, or resort, or hotel, might be 100 ERCs behind that one account. So translating those accounts to ERCs is 21,000 water ERCs and 27,685 wastewater ERCs. And you see the annual revenue, 7.9 million for water, 15.8 million for wastewater, and 1 million gallons per day on average, and of course varies depending on the seasons, 3.79 million gallons a day on water and 4.73 million gallons a day on wastewater. So that's just kind of an overview. What we spent a lot of time is getting historical data and then looking at trends moving forward. It's a forward-looking analysis centered on a financial forecast of a five-year period, fiscal year basis, 2020 through 2025. It's a cash approach, meaning that we look at all the cash needs of the utility, operating expenses, you know, the electric costs, sludge disposal, operating personnel and so forth, capital expenditures, building new lines, replacing lines, replacing plants, expanding plants. And because these capital assets last for 30, 40, 50-plus years, there's a debt funding component, which is wise, because as the system grows, those ratepayers in the future will help fund the capital as well. There's debt, principal, and interest. So it's got a well-balanced of each of these costs, and those costs are funded primarily through the ratepayers, as I'll talk in a minute. We factored in customer growth, about 4% per year. We also looked at what happens if the growth declines for a couple of years, because we know sort of the economy comes and goes, so we didn't want to overly rely on the growth, but we wanted to balance that. And very importantly, we looked at the capital funding. A master plan was completed last year for Regional Utilities. There's 117 million of investment in the next five years that's in the plan. Three major sources, one is the rate revenue that's collected each month from the customers that goes back into the capital program to replace assets, make sure they're good repair. Two, impact fees. This is one-time charges, need to do development, so that they pay their own way as the system expands. So impact fees are a significant part of the funding, 43 million dollars. If we did not have impact fees, then it would go on the backs of the ratepayers, and the rates would be higher than what we show here tonight. And then there is additional debt of 27 million dollars, again, to spread that cost over time. A good mix of true funding sources. I have a graph. What we did is we separated the water costs from the wastewater costs. As I showed you before, not all customers have both services equally, so we want to reasonably and equitably allocate the costs. The water financial forecast, the vertical bars are the costs. Operating expenses, debt service, and other capital expenditures are the bars. The solid line going across is the annual revenue from water, water accounts, and you see each year it exceeds the costs in some years more than others, but we balance that every year. We did do some sensitivity to see what happens if the growth slows and so forth. So the water financial forecast is, is, it's good, it's reasonable. I'll show you how the rates compare that support this revenue to others as well, which is favorable as well. I'll show a combined water and wastewater in a minute. The next slide is, I mentioned I like numbers, so there's all the numbers behind the graph there, and there's a lot more in the technical report. But one important factor is we do not recommend any increase in the water rates in here. There is one change in the structure of the rates to simplify them, I'll review that in a minute. There's no, there's no rate increase that's planned in this five-year program. Wastewater, similar format, actually can't see the solid line going across, but in wastewater, the bars shown are the expenditures again, and the revenue exceeds those bars every year of the forecast, similar to water, but so much so, in the next slide, the numbers, one important distinction is the wastewater system, its current rates are sufficient to fund the costs with a 5% reduction in the rate. So we're recommending, and the Regional Board adopted, a 5% rate reduction. I'll show you how that works to customers. So water, there's no rate increase for the system, and wastewater is actually a rate decrease, and we see that as funding over the next five years being sufficient to fund the cost of the system. And then talking about the rate structure, I mentioned that the water that we recommend to simplify, as you see here, I'll walk through this briefly, is there's a minimum bill, and it covers up to 6,000 gallons for water. The minimum bill is $23.02 per ERC, and then as customers use over that amount on any given month, they pay $1.66 per thousand gallons, up to 10,000 gallons. And then that usage charge for 1,000 gallons goes up for each 1,000 increment thereafter. Now, this is, this type of structure is required through the consumptive use permit of the water management. But it doesn't need to be this complicated. So if you look at this, this table, we showed the 23 of two minimum, $1.66, it'd go all the way, and you can't quite see it on here, but the bottom one is $6.05 and a bunch of rates in between. We go to the next slide, we consolidate that. So instead of having 11 increments in between, we just have two increments in between the 10,000 and 20,000 gallon level. So we basically collapse the water rate structure in a revenue-neutral basis. Any impact to customers is de minimis in there. Conversely, on the wastewater, the wastewater rate structure shown here, that showed up well, the existing structure includes a minimum bill like water of $42.59, and then that's up to 10,000 gallons. So it's basically a flat rate up to that amount. And then above that amount, these customers pay based on usage, similar to how water works. We are proposing a reduction in that $42.59 down to $40.20, okay? We do not recommend a reduction in that usage charge at this time. So by doing so, all customers get roughly about an equivalent rate decrease based on their usage level in ERCs. And it looks something like on the next slide, on 15, this is combining the water and wastewater together. Most customers have both services. This represents most customers' bill for both 0-6,000 gallons, $65.61 currently, with wastewater rate reduction would go down to $63.22, a $2.39 decrease. 73% of the customers originally utility in any given month use the 6,000 gallon or less. So this represents a large portion of the customer base. And then you can see moving up at higher usage levels, $2.39 decrease, others, higher users may, the decrease may be slightly different, but everyone would get that decrease that has wastewater service. So, and then importantly, that's how bills are impacted compared to where they were last year. And then on this slide, there's, anyway, making that logic perfect, okay?
Get the full name in there, but it's not working.
Yeah, that's fine. I can point, I can point it out. So this is about 14 other provider, municipal providers in the panhandle of Florida, going from Bay County at the top down to Panama City Beach at the bottom. This is at 6,000 gallon usage. So Regional's existing bill at 6,000 gallons is $65.61. It's shown at that highlighted, if you go down to that first blue highlighted, right there, yeah, that's the existing bill. So it's, yeah, it's down near the bottom half, and then with the proposed change in wastewater goes down to right there, to the $63.22. So, so those are very comparable to others. They're going to stay that way. You're going to find over $100 million of capital, you know, with the growth that we have moving forward. So it's a very positive outlook, very stable. Within the utility business especially, you like things to be predictable and stable, because you're building assets for a long period of time. You don't want things going all over the place, because then you also lose customer confidence. So everything I've discussed primarily deals with the monthly bills that go out to customers. There's other services that Regional Utility provides, similar to other water providers that are one-time charges, they're called miscellaneous charges, so they're not every month, but on occasion. So we also looked at the cost of, for example, installing a new meter, okay? So in some cases, we sort of validated the costs in a small meters, other meters, the costs are a little bit higher, recommend those go higher. And so we have a recommendation based on full cost for these miscellaneous charges as well. And again, these aren't the charges that customers get month-to-month, it's just when they need a new meter or, you know, some other service as well. So in summary, got a few recommendations that I'll summarize, is one, Regional's in a strong financial position and is able to handle those costs that I mentioned before. Number two, we recommend simplifying the water rate structure to take that long list of rates and consolidate it. Number three, recommend the 5% wastewater rate reduction. And we see that as still without reduction to be sufficient to meet the needs of the next five years. Next slide, should, you know, it's a projection. So if things change, you know, we heard that first presentation, we hope, you know, we, things don't get markedly worse, but you should monitor every year. Things happen every year, and just to maintain a strong financial position and to always be looking forward. So review that annually. There is a inflationary rate adjustment that the Board of County Commissioners has approved in the past, so review that every year to see if it's necessary or not. The capital plan is fully funded, 117 million. And finally, the bill, as I showed, with some help, thank you, is low compared to most other providers in the area. So it will provide a good service at a reasonable price for the foreseeable midterm future. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? If none, I guess it is good.
All right, thank you. Keep my hands off my face.
Yeah.[947.62][947.62](laughter) All right, I think it's up to us to...
We would need a motion to approve the rate structure.
Motion to approve.
Second. The motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none and all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant Agreement, number NS056, for the Coastal Dune Lakes Syndic to Super Conversion Project. This is a project that the county's worked on for quite some time, but one thing will have the gates for our work and effort. In essence, this is a grant of $353,766 to replace the remaining 90 syndic banks surrounding the coastal dune lakes. It'll take us a couple of years to get all done, and we'll work regional to get that accomplished, so it's a big step forward. So we would ask your permission to sign that agreement.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion is second. Any public comment? Yes, sir, Fred.
Eric Tricker, TRICKER. Just wanted to get some clarification. Does this relate to Agenda Item 17, which was a federal grant for $525,000?
Motion.
It's completely separate?
Completely separate. The other will be for studies of the bay and the issues with the bay and feasibility in houses and how it moves forward. This is totally separate.
Okay, straight from there. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else seeing none, give a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Jay, I believe you're up.
Chairman, Commissioners, Brian Kellerman, appreciate the time, Dave. My item of business is the request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the 2020 Concession Service Agreement with South Walton Beach Service Association. This is our managed vendor program. I was able to sort out a few math errors I had in the last one, and we got it all squared away. New date will be March 14th, start date. We had a few things this go-around that included some penalties and fines for code violations and/or contract terms and conditions, knock components. We've sorted everything out with the concessionaire. They're in agreement with it, and so we're asking for approval to get them started. This will also extend this program to the, all the regional beach accesses, except Marimar Beach, because it's a unique situation with the land, people that donate the land, and also Great Beach.
What's the board's wishes? Motion to approve. Second. A motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none and all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
And are you done?
No. Do you have a public hearing?
Yeah, I know.
So for the next agenda item, we have the public hearing for the CDC ordinance plan.
Would you like to have a motion?
Yeah, we might ought to have a motion.
Motion to have a public hearing.
Second. Got a motion second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead.
All right, great, thank you. So the agenda item is request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the ordinance, amended ordinances 86-18 and 98-2, establishing the initial tourist development tax and the third sand tourist development tax as amended by ordinances 91-5, 91-9, 01-12, 94-14, 97-38, 00-19, 02-01, 04-06, 07-98, 08-33, 09-11, 14-02, 16-01, and 18-03, which addresses collection issues in prior tourist development plans and updating the previously adopted Walton County tourist development plan with anticipated revenue and expenses for the 24 months beginning January 1st, 2020.
All right. Yeah, it is. What date do we want to try and do this? Next board meeting?
It is the time. Can we do it right now?
We've advertised.
We've advertised. Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve the ordinance. All back. Second. All back. The second. Got a motion in a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And motion closed, public hearing. Somebody?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioners, I have my add-on agenda item. I'd like to request that we hold an executive session in Beach Life Land Trust at All versus Walton County. It's case number 2019CA217. This is the case regarding Gulf Shore Manor subdivision in the Seabrook area. I'd like to have the executive session. We could do it different time, but we have time to have it at our next meeting, March meeting board, which is the morning meeting. We can either start at 8:00 AM if you want it, or do it after.
Well, I would...
Probably after, only actually that, because Phil Warner probably...
Go ahead, travel a little bit.
Make a motion. We have our executive session, March 24th, at the Funiac, after our regular board meeting.
All right. Motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
So you have, okay, Commissioner Glybeau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a, there's been several instances in the last year or so where, both on the coastal dune lakes and on the bay, where contractors or developers are, have cleared, clear cut into the protection zone. Oddly enough, most of these instances occur on the weekends. Imagine that. But one of the reasons, one of the problems is, is that our code enforcement officers are not out on the weekends, which I equate to the sheriff saying, we're only going to work Monday through Friday and coming back on Monday and having a lot of burglaries. You can't let the bad guys know when they're going to work. So I got some things to, some of these need to be handled through an update of our ordinance, and a couple of them we can do tonight. But the first three items on the agenda, one of which is to grant our officers the authority to issue emergency 72-hour stop work orders. If the officer drives up on someone clearing in the zone, they need to have the immediate ability to stop the activity. And this would give them the tools to do so. They've been to school, they're certified, it shouldn't be a big issue. And the second one would be to allow these, allow developers to appeal these orders to the planning director within 72 hours. So that would give due process rights to everyone involved and make the planning director more the judge instead of the enforcer. And the third is to, in the case where these things are ordered to, the restoration plan be in effect and be fixed and completed before the stop work order is lifted. And I would also include that only the planning director can lift a stop work order once it's in place. But on the top three items, what I'm asking for is that we direct the planning director, Ms. Carpenter, and the county attorney, Ms. Moise, to develop a addition to our ordinance and bring that back to the board for further action, and I make that a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not opposed to any of that at the moment. We're in the, my understanding is we've offered a job to a new code director, and he starts Monday week?
Monday.
Monday. I would, I would like to postpone this so he's having a little time in the job and him be a part of this. I think it's important that if we're asking the guy to do it, that he have some input in it. So I would, I'm certainly not against these things, but I think we need to wait at least till the next meeting in the Funiac.
I have a problem with that.
Okay.
Can you withdraw your motion? I withdraw the motion. All right. So we'll just put it on the agenda for discussion at the 24th meeting. That includes the four and five, which is we need staff code enforcement seven days a week, and we need to give them the authority to hire somebody to make that happen. But we'll, we'll do it all at the Funiac if that's what the board wishes.
There, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, unless there's objection, we'll present these to that new director on day one, take him, begin the conversation, and begin percolating around with his legal and planning, and so when we have that meeting, it won't be just thought out of the company.
All right. So all of it will be just postponed to the 24th. That's going to give you a legal, um, okay.
Well, till we begin.
At least legit, yeah. All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
May I address?
Yes, come on.
Barbara Morano, I didn't realize you were going to postpone this to the Funiac, otherwise I would have spoken when you asked me to speak in the beginning. So may I say something, because I may not be at the Funiac? May I address with...
Go ahead, let's touch topic up here, and you can speak to it.
All right. Well, like Commissioner Anderson says, I definitely support all of this. For many years, I've been working with the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory, and what we've always been hearing is developers doing things they shouldn't be doing, and they say, oops, I'm sorry, and they get their hands tapped, and the consequence is not very strong. So number one, I definitely support this for not only the Dune Lakes or the Bay, and go on record for that, but I'm also saying, I think we need more than one person. I think our whole code department needs more than one. I would go to your new director. But, you know, it's my understanding, maybe that Freeport, or maybe the Funiac is asking for our code officers to do some work for them, I'm not sure, but I'm hearing that. That concerns me. I don't want anything taken away from Walton County. We certainly need this seven days a week. We can't, you know, as a, as a resident, I want to call code, I want to be able to be accepted, and I want some action. So I appreciate Commissioner Glybeau bringing this up, and you'll get the support. I don't know how many people follow this directly, but hopefully you'll get some support even by email, same way Commissioner Anderson, most of the dune lakes are in District 5, as well as a big part of the Bay, right, in your district. So I know I see this coming, but certainly think of that more than one code officer. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Lee Moore.
Thank you, Commissioners. Lee Moore, well, sort of.
Sort of.
M-O-O-R-E. I'll echo everything Barbara said to keep from repeating it, but I do want to further emphasize the need that I agree with and feel for a broader evaluation of code enforcement. We've talked about this before. I understand the need to get input from the new director and see what will happen when we get, hopefully, some synergies and efficiencies from combining the beach code with the regular code. But I can tell you from a design review board member's perspective, I've been on their board for a while now, that we're seeing a couple of things emerging. Let me say upfront, this is not a criticism for the code manager or the code officers, and I'll come back around to that in a moment, but it's not at all, it's going to sound like it. But we're seeing two patterns start to emerge. One is that when we ask a new applicant to comply with certain parts of the code, we're starting to have them bring us photographs of other businesses violating... One is that when we ask a new applicant to comply with certain parts of the code, we're starting to have them bring us photographs of other businesses violating that very code on the corridor. And they're not necessarily, they're not businesses, some of them sometimes are, but they're not businesses that were grandfathered in before the code went into place, okay? So, I want to clarify that, because some people will say that, and sometimes it is, but now it's starting to be not. And the other thing I'm seeing more and more, and we're seeing as board, is newly approved projects that are built, within 60, 90 days of going in place, they start violating codes. And I firmly believe that that is because they are seeing things not being enforced, so they feel that they can get away with it. Because that's fairly unusual to have that happen on a repeated basis, and I'm seeing it more and more frequently. And then, just from being out there a lot on that corridor, I'm seeing more and more and more and more code violations, because we've had tons of growth, and we're starting to have a ton of growth north of the Bay, and that's only going to get more and more and more. So, you know, five code officers and a manager cannot manage that, so that's the point. I'm not criticizing what code is doing or their performance, I'm saying it's not near enough staff. And probably some, it could be looked at to see if some procedures could be more efficiently structured, so that it doesn't take them as long per issue to deal with it. So, I know it's a little beyond the specific subject, but it's budget season, I strongly encourage you to look at that very, very seriously. And it's not just about the scenic corridor, either. I'm talking about that because I'm a design review board member, but it's outside of that as well, and this is very important, and I agree with this issue 100% as well.
Thank you, Lee.
The reason I said only one was because we're in the middle of the budget year and I get Melissa throw things at me. So, but I understand that we probably need some more in the next budget year.
Well, I think when we get the new manager in place Monday and he starts working through the process, I'm sure Stan and Larry, Dee, you'll all sit down with him and look at what he thinks is adequate number. Well, you know, in most police departments and codes, that seems to be the one that gets funded the least, so we'll just ask staff to consider that as they move forward on this. Did you want to speak? Come on.
I do.
Mr. Chairman, while she's coming, just for reassurance, our direction to the new code manager is not, or code director is not, this is the way we do things, go take care of them. We're expecting this individual to be innovative, creative, look at where we are, have conversations with each of you, understand what's important, and then put together a program. It'll take some time, and it will take some effort, and it will take resources, but that's going to be our objective behind consolidating the beach code and the code officers under one roof, so that we can maximize those efforts and make sure that we're all pulling together for the same good of Walton County. But, rest sure that the direction will be clear, that we need to be more efficient, we need to be more effective in what we're doing, and we'll look to you guys for direction and resources.
Well, we got a new set of eyes coming in here that's not familiar, may see things and jump right out at him, so, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm, oh, I already, I'm going to worry, Eccles. Oh, Laurie Eccles, E-C-H-O-L-S, I had to think how to spell it itself. Danny, thank you very much for bringing this forward. Miramar Beach gets left out a lot because there's so much going on in other parts of Walton County. But, as a person that drives the streets and actually goes up to a lot of the people that I see that are, actually probably shouldn't even be working in the areas they work in or whatever else, basically what I hear is nobody's looking and nobody's going to do anything about it anyway. So, that, and I know y'all are talking about this, and I know it's all great, but I just want to tell you what I hear. And we see a lot, and really, we don't really even, I haven't seen a code enforcer in Miramar Beach in a long time. I did see one, a throw-up parked in a driveway the other day, but I saw one. Anyway, Danny, thank you for doing this, and I just want to support you on this. And I do think it's really important, when you have the new people coming in, is actually give these guys that are doing these, that are your code people, give them the opportunity to actually give the people a citation, if you don't, because people, if they don't, if they don't see that there are ramifications of doing things, they're just going to continue to do them, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on that? Okay. Commissioner Nipper.
Governor, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nick.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As it pertains to the Chautauqua Bay and our efforts to keep a healthy waterway and a healthy estuary, projects that come in front of us, we need to know what to attack and what to do and what's causing the problem. With that being said, I'd like to request approval to draft a scope of work and to advertise for an invitation to bid for additional water quality sampling and analysis in the Chautauqua Bay to aid the identification and prioritization of future stormwater treatment retrofit projects.
Commissioner Nick, is Melissa in here?
Yeah, she's right there.
I mean, no, I didn't name Melissa.
You meant Melinda, but she's right there too.
She is too. Melinda. And Scott's back there too. All right. Y'all tell me, based upon what you're applying for already, is that redundant to what Commissioner Nick is, or is he going to cover the same territory he's asking?
No, I believe that what Commissioner Nick is wanting to do is going to be an asset to what we're already doing or what we're planning to do associated with the feasibility study. The feasibility study is going to look at several different aspects, stormwater will be one of them, but we won't necessarily be doing a lot, doing sampling associated with the feasibility study. So, this data could actually help.
Okay, so, who's going to draft this scope of work and advertising? Is that you?
That's not me. I'm telling them to do that.
Yes, sir. So, we'll be drafting the scope of work and advertising the invitation to be, we've identified about eight locations in South Walton, and what we're looking at doing is doing some outfall sampling where these outfalls discharge into the bay, and doing some samples under normal flow conditions and after a one-inch rainfall event to get an idea of what pollutants may or may not be entering in the bay. And this is going to help us aid in identifying and prioritizing future stormwater retrofits to improve water quality in the bay. This is just a small piece to the big puzzle.
Okay. Any other cost associated with what he's asking here?
You know, right now, I'm ballparking somewhere around $100 to $125,000 potentially.
And my question always is, where's the money come from?
I understand. We're looking at using TIP funds.
Okay.
Because what we're going to, we're hoping this, the data that we collect from this, we'll use this for future TIP projects.
Right, got you. Thank you. Making a motion? Could you make a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that motion. Motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Is that all you have, sir?
Yes, sir. Today it is.
Today it is, okay. Commissioner Anderson.
I've had a lot of calls on companies coming in, reading motorcycles, slingshots, and scooters, not the scooters that I hate necessarily, but the scooters. I would like for Sydney to look in to what, how other counties are doing this, how dealing with this.
And these are, because we're looking at the multi-use path with the micro mobility, so this would be more towards vehicles that are on the roads?
Yes, yes. I don't think motorcycles are going to be on the multi-use path, I hope not anyway. But, I just, first of all, I don't like motorcycles anyway, so I think they're dangerous. I think we have someone in the county that should agree, but he doesn't. But, I think that, I think there's two people, sir. One already regrets it, the other doesn't. So, I think we need to look in to see if there's a way to limit this. If, I know when you buy a motorcycle, from what I understand from the people that buy them, that us go all the time, I think that there's a course you have to take before they'll sell you one. And now, we're, they're being rented right out of a business, what kind of course are they taking? Again, the same with the scooters that I hate, you know? And the reason I hate them is because there's no, you know, they can rent to anybody. I think, I think by allowing these type businesses, you know, to do this without, you know, knowing how it's happening, we just need to look into this and see what our options are. So, I'd like for you to, if the board agrees, to look into this and see what's going on with it, okay? One other thing, Adam.
On that, could we include maybe looking at whether we can borrow these things, these businesses from opening? Is that part of what you...
Yeah, every option we have, just, another thing is, I didn't get to say it while our current code director was in here, but he stepped out, but there were several things said that act like these guys weren't doing a good job, and I'm pretty sure y'all didn't mean that. But, you know, are we understaffed? Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's any doubt about that. But, the way this was presented was basically that these guys were ignoring things on purpose, and I hope y'all didn't mean that, because these are hardworking county employees. Do they make mistakes sometimes? Yeah, but you know what? So does everybody else in this room. So, I just want our code people to know that I think you're doing a good job, I do think they're understaffed, and I just don't want people to come up here thinking they can just disparage our county employees. That's my side box.
Okay. All right, is that all you got, sir? That's it. I have nothing to add tonight. Next up is citizen's request. Martine Hall, Matty Kelly Arts Foundation. Jump up, please.
Hi, I'm Tracy Laufman. We're representing Marshall Hall with the Matty Kelly Arts Foundation on the 20th Anniversary Chair. This is Melanie.
Melanie Moore, Education Director for the Matty Kelly Arts Donation.
Okay.
I'll read to read the proclamation.
We ain't got to read it, but at least y'all let us know that's what you're looking for.
Yes, and do you have a copy? Because...
Okay, so, we understood that the proclamation would be read today, so we're here to remind, we may have misunderstood that directive since we're representing.
Tell me anything about it, Dee.
We could postpone that, I can run and grab a copy and come back at the end of the...
See if we can get a copy through our portal, the website.
We could that, so.
I don't know why this is...
And I even saw the email exchange with Marshall Hall following up and...
Did you make the book?
Yeah, let's...
Because there's a resolution, we'll have to make a book.
It's not my book.
Mary directed it. We could do it in, maybe two weeks.
We can do it then. It's at 2:00 AM at 9:00.
Okay. So, who shall we contact who to follow up with?
Dee, I know.
Okay, thank you very much.
To follow up. Okay, thank you. Scott Johnson, come forward, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the next three requests are regarding road closures for races. Each of them have been reviewed by the appropriate fire departments, the sheriff's office, and our public works to have the chief approve it from each of those. This is Mr. Johnson, who are down by the right of...
Okay. Mr. Johnson, you got anything you want to allow other than what you've already submitted to the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the board's wishes? Motion to approve. Second. Got a motion, second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Johnson, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. William Gibson. Do you have anything other than what the administrator said about going through all the approvals and everything? Is there anything else you want to present to the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, thank you, sir. Amy Stoles, if I pronounced that right. Oh, got one right tonight, anyway.
Aye.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anything you want to add other than what has been brought? Okay, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion is second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now it's time to public comment, and you can talk about everything, including your dog. All right, Barbara, come on. Lee, you're next.
Thank you, Barbara Morano. I don't have a dog. Commissioner Anderson, when you asked our attorney to look at barring scooters, I recall that Bay County, when we talked about the scooters you hated, the scooters now you're talking about, Bay County, I believe, abolished them, so we have a precedent set already, and I think that particular company came all over to Walton County. So, I'm hoping, am I right on that?
I think it's under appeal.
Well, so they did ban, I think it's motorcycles, I can't remember what.
Well, the company that's operating now in Walton County, I think they banned.
It's a little more complicated than that. Ultimately, their ban was held to be preempted. They, if I'm understanding it correctly, they passed some more regulations that basically made it extremely onerous for these companies to operate, and that has been upheld on appeal. But, part of the point is we would talk to Bay County because I know that they've had to deal with these issues. So, we are somewhat limited in what we can do because of state preemption, but I...
Sure. Well, I appreciate what you're trying to do, and thank you, Sydney. And Commissioner Anderson, when I was up here speaking about code, I was not disparaging anybody. In fact, I'm supporting that they can get their hands more than slapped by the 72-hour work order. I mean, so what this is, is giving code more teeth, and that's what they need in all this time. The second thing I wanted to comment on, in fact, the BCC thing kind of went boomy. Are we having a public hearing, or was this the public hearing?
This was the public hearing.
Okay, all right. So, let me just add, and I want to thank the Commissions, and I want to thank Jay. The Topsail was opened and Greaton Beach was opened, free to the public from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And when that program first started, it took a little bit to ramp up, and it's a wonderful program. And my question is, is that going to be continued, that we're opening our state parks free to the public and the tourists from Memorial Day to Labor Day, especially with this customer use issue? Jay, great.
Yes, we are planning on, we're drafting the verbiage right now in the agreement with the state park folks, and we'll be arguing that back probably the next meeting or two. But, we do plan on doing this program again.
All right, and this program was so popular that we ran out of funds. And so, what I'm hearing on social media is, we can't get back into the state parks. So, I'm hoping that if the state parks call Jay and say, we ran out of funds July 3rd, I'm hoping Jay can make a phone call to the BCC and get it back open July 4th. Can we move that fast?
Well, so, to Sydney's point, we can't quite do that, but we did put additional funds in the budget this year, because we did run out of funds last year.
And we worked out that issue last year.
No, we had, we stopped it about two weeks shy of the Labor Day weekend. And so, but we put $100,000 in the budget last year, and put $150,000 this year, so we feel we'll be adequate to cover the difference that we were all over this year, this past year.
Anything else, Barbara, do you have?
No, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Lee.
Two things, very quickly. First, one clarification. I thought I made it clear that I wasn't disparaging the code enforcement department, but I will say it again, I am not. I think they are severely limited in resources to be able to handle the demand that's there. That was the whole point and the only point. No disparagement against them at all. And then, the second thing is, I am just so happy and thrilled as a citizen to see both you all as our elected officials and our staff...
you all as our elected officials and our staff addressing water quality issues in a serious and aggressive way in this county. I think you should be all commended, both staff and elected officials, it's so incredibly important, and a lot of places wait until it's way too late, we've seen a lot of those stories in the news, so I'm not too far away from here. So thank you very, very much.
I would say that those proposals were vetted through code enforcement, that they were, they were actually the genesis of those things, so they understand, there weren't better resources to work with.
Yes, ma'am.
Lori Eccles, E-C-H-O-L-S. I just want to thank y'all, because I've been getting all kinds of remarks on the next-door posts about what you've done for Legion Park. And Jay, I know you have, can I address Jay for just one second?
Uh...
It's a good one.
He can hear you.
Okay, but I wanted to look at you and tell you, thank you. The grass is growing, and everything's really good, I mean, it looks really, really nice. Hogan Park coming along, we've got the area where they can't do the drug trade, anything more, and it's awesome. People just have to walk in the park, they actually have the Hogan Park sign up for the people that donated the park, I guess, so it's a really nice sign that's never been there before. So the only thing I would like to ask, because a lot of people are saying this about Legion Park, is now that they can actually use the park and put their boats down into the water, they, I guess when, I don't know if it happened in the hurricane, or whatever, when it happened, but there's no piling out there, there's no pole for them to tie their boats off, so when they actually back down to put their boat in the water, and then they go back to park their vehicle, their boat's like way off somewhere else, goes, it's moving. So if y'all could put a piling back out there for them to tie their boat to, I don't understand boats, but they evidently want a pole out there to tie their boat to. So that's awesome. And I am sure that I was the one who made the disparaging remark to the code's people, and for that I am truly sorry, I don't mean, and I know they work hard, I'm just saying that, I can only say what I hear. And when I hear those remarks, I mean, y'all are the only people we have to talk to. But at any rate, so for that, if there's anybody still here, I'm really sorry I said something bad about you, I didn't mean to hurt your feelings.
Okay, thank you. Back you coming up to talk, or going to leave?
Talking and talking.
All right, go ahead.
We've heard a lot about, Matt Carpenter, the planning department, CAR, PDN, PDR, we've heard a lot about increased code enforcement needs. Let me share you with a little bit about the planning department's activity level year-to-date of this period last year, January 1st to the 10th of this month. Pre-applications, we're up 40% over the same period last year. Actual development, corporate development order applications, that includes the various types of applications, we are up 200, or 120% over last year, same period of time. Single-family building permit review, we're up about 25% over the same period last year. So the request for additional code enforcement activity partially is a result of the growing nature of our county. And it's not just in the need for enforcement of code. Our staff is working just as hard as they can, we're trying to fill vacant positions, hopefully we filled one today. But in spite of that, these are staffing levels we're trying to get to for last year's activity and the year before that. I know we're getting ready to go into the budget period, but we are growing, the people in our audience absolutely notice that, and we're seeing it before these folks see it, because it has to come through this office before it is built.
Mr. Carpenter, could you share one more statistic you told me a while ago about single-family, that the time period on single-family permits?
We've gotten the review period, or at least to the initial review and/or approval down to 13 days, the actual issuance is about an average of 16 days on this same period year-to-date.
And it was two or three months?
At one point, we were at four months, yes, sir.
So I just wanted y'all to be commended for how, for the level of improvement you've made in just a short period of time. And I appreciate, I know, everybody appreciates. Well, I would also like to mention something. A few years back, I think I was talking, I'm not gonna name names of staff that I talked to, but they were directors, and we were having those issues about delay, delay, taking so long to do this, or inspections, blah, blah, blah. And the answer I got is, we did not want to be in a position that we were in 2007, where we had to lay off a bunch of people because of the downturn. And there was more, I took that more as well, we'll just do with what we got and muddle through it, instead of asking for personnel that may, in another year or two years, they might be asked to, to let them go because of the whatever, the downturn. So I don't know, I don't know if I'd wanna staff accordingly, based upon that rationale. I think if we need it, and I think you do, I think code needs more people, just get it done and get it out there, and let's get these people hired and brought into the fold, and let's get out here and see if we can take that 16 days down to 12, or whatever, that's getting unrealistic, I know, but I appreciate the 16 days you're saying from the time that you get to, pardon me, and I think I've called you on a couple of them where they were three months out and hadn't heard nothing on a single-family dwelling, not a big development, just a house. So with that said, Melissa, keep that in mind when it comes time for, as we go through the budget process this year. I support it, because I think it needs to be done, it'll cut down on a lot of complaint and aggravation, especially on that code side. It's about time that maybe we can get some things done, that we can put a little more teeth in these code violations, and I ain't got no grief of pocket somebody the first time when he's out there, and then, I seen a video today where they were out there past the time they were supposed to be knocking off, and that's unacceptable, and we're gonna have to get their line.
We have an idea for that, I'm...
Okay, outstanding. I didn't...
Thank you, Matt.
Is there anything else, any other public comments? All right, Cliff, you're getting close to my supper time.
We didn't bring no food tonight.
We didn't bring nothing tonight.
Good evening, Commissioners, Cliff Nowr, KNAUER. I got two quick issues. One is, I'd like to thank you guys for taking the septic tanks off of the Coastal Dune Lakes, and thanking Melinda for that as well.
Amen.
I lived on Oyster Lake for almost 20 years. My kids grew up fishing in Oyster Lake, and they could never figure out why I wouldn't let them keep the fish. But I knew that all of my neighbors down the street were all on septic tanks, and you could literally see it running down their backyard, straight into Oyster Lake. And so my kids grew up fishing there, and I just really appreciate you guys taking the effort to do that. Lived there for almost 20 years, and came home one day and found my clothes on fire in the driveway, and so decided I would move to another place. So I bought myself a, taught myself a lot on Lake Powell, on Walton County side of Lake Powell, and I intend to build a retirement house there, and glad to know that there will be, my neighbors won't be on septic tanks, so I appreciate you guys for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Adjourn.